If I could ask Madam Clerk to please call the roll.
Council President Lyda?
Here.
Council Pro Tem Posey?
Here.
Councilmember Sweeney?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Murphy?
Here.
Councilmember Middlebrooks?
Here.
Councilmember McClinton?
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. If everyone would please rise and allow Madam Clerk to offer an invocation, and Councilman Sweeney to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you'll bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for the many blessings you have given us. May more and more providers be available to receive and give the COVID-19 vaccination. May you protect us from the potential bad weather and keep us safe, and the citizens, visitors, police, fire, and public works groups. May we look to you for guidance and to lead our way. May the upcoming state of the city given by our mayor be very beneficial to the businesses, our leaders, and our citizens, as we look forward to the wonderful future for our city. May you also bring healing to those in need and strength to those caring and helping for them. In the name of your son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're honored and grateful tonight to have Jefferson County Commission President Jimmy Stevens with us. Commissioner, I understand you would like to share a word with us on a couple of updates?
I would, I sure would.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council, Mayor, it's good to see y'all. It's good to be here tonight. I know that I've had one, two, three calls from over the weekend today about Patton Chapel Road. We're working. We're about to do emergency repairs on that road. My last conversation was with Councilman Middlebrooks, and we're doing the emergency repairs. We hopefully would done, we had had them done today, but I saw that it was going to be after the weather comes through. We've been in contact with the state, who is the primary donor of this, or the recipient. We have good news. They said that they would be completed with the project in two to three months, and I was on the phone with them, with Councilman Middlebrooks, and I said, "Let's give them four," to be sure this is government work. So hopefully, this project will be completed, and it will be up and running, and be a great project for the city of Hoover, for Jefferson County, and for the citizens. And I truly apologize for the slowness of this particular job, but it was a bid job, and it was a county contractor that we really weren't really satisfied and happy with, but we're holding his feet to the fire, the state is, and we're making sure that he does what's best for the citizens, and it will be a good project. The other thing, I talked with Mayor Brocato today concerning the COVID-19 money. The first money was filled with restrictions, and that was an emergency fund that dealt with the crisis itself. And these funds that are going to be available are going to be recovery funds, that we will have a little bit broader ability to meet the needs of our citizens and our businesses, and in some of our nonprofits. And we look forward to working with your municipality and making sure these funds are distributed to do the most good. It's our goal is not to send a penny back, okay? And that's our primary concern. We're working with Whit O'Brien. I don't know whether you've heard that. They are our national disaster team, and they pre-clear everything. And we want to make sure that we work, continue to work with you and the mayor, to make sure that our citizens reap the entire and full benefits of these monies. And we appreciate everything that you do, and let you understand that we are a partner in moving forward, and we look forward to continuing this. Let's keep, put my mask back on, listen to this speedy, and I've heard your reputation, Mr. President, that I had to get here in a hurry to-
You're out of time, Commissioner.
-be on the agenda. So that's good news, and I look forward to it, and try to emulate you and do the same job with the county commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Let us also be some of the first to wish you an early happy birthday. You've got one coming up this week?
Got one coming up.
Wednesday.
Hopefully, we won't have tornadoes.
That's right. So happy birthday.
...carry me into my 70th in style.
That's right. Yes, sir. I'd like to call on Mayor Brocato to come up and introduce a presentation that Hoover Police Department is here to give on the CLEA process. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate that good news. So we're so proud of our police department for taking on the challenge of to become an accredited law enforcement agency, of course. That could not have happened without the funding and support of the city council, so we're grateful for that. You know, throughout the history of our city, our police department's really done an excellent job in terms of, you know, just public service. They really are the bedrock of our community, and it's really what cities are supposed to do. That's one of their number-one goals, is to provide public safety. They do just a great job, but we know they do a great job, but we think it's important that that be validated by an outside agency, and so the accreditation process is going to do that for us, and that's exactly what they're going through right now. It means that we're not afraid to open up to our policies, our procedures, our statistics, our practices, that we can be held accountable, and that we have the highest of standards. That's what, just some of the things that accreditation is going to do for us. So I'm very proud that they're going through this. The fire department is going through the exact same process as well. It's a very lengthy process, and I'll ask Chief Doris if he would now come up and just bring his team up and share with the council and those in the audience exactly what they are going through and what they expect to accomplish through this. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Brocato, Council, Commissioner. Good to see you, sir. We started talking about CLEA, the accreditation process, in December of 2016. We met with a representative at that time, and were about to put it in the budget, but because of some constraints, it was put on hold at the time. So in fiscal year 19, we allocated the required funds. In May of 19, we signed a contract with CLEA. At that point in time, I selected Lieutenant Matt Tumblin, who will be coming up in a second, to lead the team. Matt has done a heck of a job. It is time-consuming, every day, eight hours a day, five days a week, working on CLEA. And as I tell the other supervisors, when he asks for information, and they're not real quick to get it back to him, I tell them all the time, you know, "We can move Matt out and move you in." And I can assure you, that gets the information to him very quick. It's very, very tough, and again, Matt has done a heck of a job. CLEA is the gold standard of police. We are going to be one of about 742, once we get accredited, one of 742 departments in the United States that are accredited. There are over 18,000 police departments in this country, by the last year of statistics. So again, we look forward to it. Matt's going to come up and kind of give you a little bedrock, our timeline, where we are, and if there's any questions, we'll certainly answer. Lieutenant Tumblin?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Mayor, council members? So what is CLEA? CLEA is the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, created with the goal to increase community advocacy, create greater accountability, reduce risk and liability exposure, and to help provide a stronger defense against civil liability. CLEA was created by the joint efforts of the following organizations: the International Association of Chiefs of Police, the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, the National Sheriff's Association, and Police Executive Research Forum. Our objective is to obtain advanced accreditation, the highest level offered at over 360 required standards versus the basic at 188. So what is a standard? It's the expected level of quality and accountability that must be obtained by our department. CLEA offers two levels of accreditation, and we chose the advanced option to offer our city the highest level of service. There are five phases for completion. As Chief mentioned earlier, the enrollment in May of 2019 is when we began this process. The self-assessment, incorporating CLEA standards into existing policies and/or creating new policies. Keep in mind, we already had a lot of policies in place meeting these standards, had to just trend them up a little bit, make them more CLEA-specific, and then other standards we did have to adopt into new policies. Third is the assessment phase, includes the mock, remote, and onsite assessment. Just to give you some background on that, the mock assessment is fellow accreditation managers like myself from other departments coming in, looking at our site, looking at our policies and our proofs, and giving us advice and recommendations to shore us up before CLEA comes in and looks at us. And that's the next one. The remote or virtual is where CLEA personnel actually come into our site, and they look at our policies, and they look at our proofs of compliance, which I'll explain that in a minute. And they, again, give us recommendations or advises of revisions we need to make in order to get to their standard. The final is the onsite. That's a little more in-depth. The onsite consists of CLEA personnel visiting our department to confirm in a live, real-world scenario that we're adhering to our policies, which have incorporated those standards. This consists of conducting interviews with the Chief of Police, other personnel about our day-to-day operation, live inspections, and also allows for public comment sessions by phone or in person. The fourth one is commission review and decision for awarding accreditation. So each agency is assigned to an agency review committee, which consists of four CLEA commissioners. This committee reviews the findings from the onsite assessment, and questions the accreditation manager and the Chief of Police during a public review hearing to determine if we are eligible and have met those requirements. Agency review committee then makes its recommendation to the CLEA commission, which consists of 21 personnel, and they make their final approval for accreditation at that point. And this process is repeated every four years for the live onsite and the reapplication for accreditation. The fifth, maintaining compliance annually and updating or obtaining our reaccreditation before the commission every four years. To maintain compliance, we must provide what's called proofs of compliance, and that's just it. We're proving to CLEA and everyone else that we are adhering to our standards, that we have incorporated into our policies. An example of that, there's a use-of-force documentation standard. If an officer encounters a use-of-force incident, he is required to document that. And so he'll document that use-of-force on a use-of-force form. That form is reviewed by a supervisor. That form is also sent to training. They also review the form. They see if there's any necessary training needs that need to be adjusted. They also look and see if any policy violations have been conducted. If there are any issues or concerns, of course, the Chief of Police will be made aware of this. That's an example of a proof of compliance. That form is now attached to that policy for the year 2021, and that's required every year. So if I have a use-of-force form that I use as a proof for 2021, I can't use that same form next year. So every year, we're constantly proving, we're maintaining compliance, and we're adhering to our policies. Current status, we have 128 updated policies incorporating over 360 standards. Keep in mind, some of these policies may incorporate multiple standards from CLEA. We have 13 policies remaining pending final approval, and we have approximately 500 remaining proofs of compliance, which I just discussed, needed prior to beginning our first assessment phase, which is the mock assessment, where the fellow accreditation managers will come in and look at our site. Our goals, fall of 2021, complete our mock assessment, one of the three assessments we discussed, required. Winter of 2021 and '22, complete the virtual assessment. Spring of '22, complete the onsite assessment. And summer of '22, obtain accreditation status. I added the CLEA website. If anyone has any more questions or interest in that organization, there's a wealth of information on their website. It goes into the accreditation process much more in-depth, and may answer your questions if you have any, if I can't answer them here.
Very good. Any questions from the council?
Very good. I got off easy.
Thank you very much. Very easy. We appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this. I know we've seen other departments in the city go through similar accreditations, and this is no easy task, but the city's deeply indebted to all the efforts, and we look forward to getting this done.
Thank you. And it's much harder than the fire department's.
That's I'm sure. We will now move into our consent agenda. The consent agenda is presented as a whole, items that are not deemed controversial or are expected to not have any discussion. I would ask, are there any members of the public that are here to speak on any of the items that you see in front of you on the consent agenda? If so, we'll be happy to remove it from such. I see none. Any from the members that would like to be removed from the agenda before we move forward? Hearing none. Mr. Corley, would you please read the items?
Item number six is the approval of minutes from the February 25, 2021 work session and the March 1, 2021 council meeting. Item seven, Resolution 641821 approves a 140 special events retail license for Crab de Jour of Alabama doing business at Crab de Jour located at 2,000 Riverchase Galleria, Suite 252. Number eight, Resolution number 641921 rejects bid number 2102 for a truck-mounted LED video screen rental and authorizes the mayor or his designated to negotiate with Screenworks NEP Live Events at an amount not to exceed the quoted bid amount. Resolution number 642021 approves revisions to the city's Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual, as shown on Exhibit A attached to the resolution. Resolution 6421-21 approves a budget amendment for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2021, as set forth in the resolution. And Resolution number 642221 declares a public purpose and authorizes the installation of posts in neighborhood multifamily housing complexes for Little Free Hoover Public Libraries, as set forth in the resolution.
Mr. President, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and second for approval of all items on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and all items are approved. We'll now move into our regular agenda. The public will note, and members will recall, that each of these items are second readings. A couple have public hearings. So we've seen these items on an agenda before, and have had two opportunities through two work sessions to talk through these. We'll move into those items now. Item number 12, ordinance number 21-2510, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance annexes the property located at 1873 Mayflower Drive, owned by Robert Matthews.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of ordinance number 21-2510.
Second.
A motion and second for adoption of ordinance. Any questions or comments from the council members? I know Mr. Matthews, I believe, has been here. Perhaps he's here again tonight to answer any questions. Any questions for the gentleman? Hearing none. Any questions from members of the public? Seeing none, we have a motion and second for adoption of the ordinance. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and allow the members to vote?
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Sweeney?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Mr. McClinton?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye. Seven ayes, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. Item number 13, ordinance 21-2511, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance annexes the property located at 1868 Westerwood Drive, owned by Robert Matthews.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of ordinance number 21-2511.
Second.
Have a motion and second for adoption of ordinance. Any questions or comments from the members? Questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Sweeney?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Mr. McClinton?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye. Seven ayes, zero nays, and the ordinance is adopted. Item number 14, ordinance number 21-2508, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance rezones property located off I-459 and Peridoo Place from A-1 to C-2, and is represented by Hoover Senior Living Partners LLC.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of ordinance number 21-2508.
Second.
Have a motion and second to begin discussion. I will now open the public hearing. Anyone in the public here to speak on behalf of this item? Yes, sir. If you'd like to come on down and speak, we'd be happy to hear you. We could get your name and street, please, sir?
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies. My name is Darrell Beasley. I'm at 5460 Scout Creek Drive in Hoover. I stand with concern for the setback, the buffer allotment for this project. I don't stand in opposition to the project itself, but I am concerned about the buffer between our Scout Creek properties along the easement and the proposed division development as it relates to the senior citizen facility. I'm not sure at this point what assurances or what modifications can be made, but I would like to be on record with concerns about the distance between my backyard and the development.
Mr. Beasley, there are certain standards for setbacks that are prescribed by city ordinance. We'd be happy to walk through those tonight if you'd like. Mr. Martin is here and could walk us through those. Would that be helpful to you?
It would. I remember reading that there are 60 feet of buffer in some areas, and I believe 140 feet in others. My concern is with that buffer and not understanding where those variances would be.
Yes, sir. Mr. Martin, would you mind helping to kind of walk through those questions? And if we could pull the map up and ensure we get some clarity for the gentleman?
All right. Good evening. So as it relates to the buffering question, I'm not sure if we have... Okay, we have the exhibit. Okay. So we went through the development plan with the developer, pre-application, even before the item was on an agenda. And buffers, that was one of the topics that we covered to make sure we were giving correct information. And in this particular case, all right, so yes, we have a total area of 85 feet between the rear property boundaries of properties to the west and the bungalow portion of the site, including an area that would be replanted after the grades were disturbed.
Mr. Martin, sorry to interrupt you. Can we ensure Mr. Beasley gets a good opportunity to see exactly what we're talking about there?
All right. Let me see if I can... All right. So we have 85 feet on the west side of the site. The lighter green indicates areas that are being replanted after disturbances, grading of the site. To the south, we actually have 65 feet is the shortest amount of distance, with all but 25 feet of that being existing vegetation trees on site. And we tried to arrive at the most appropriate buffering between existing residential and this development. Now, given that this particular portion of the site is residential, semi-detached residential, backing up to residential, our code didn't really specify a buffer for that sector. And typically, you do not buffer between similar uses. Now, if you had a commercial use for the site, then yes, there are buffers that are specified in the ordinance. However, our advice to the applicant was to give as much space as possible, given that this would be a disturbance of the property. And generally, residents, especially in long-established neighborhoods, do appreciate there being some buffering put back into place if you have a property next door that's disturbed. So long and short of it being that, given this is a residential product that's going to be located adjacent to the Scout Trace development, the buffers as presented, staff found those to be acceptable, and within the intent of the ordinance.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Mac, if you would, just to verify, the light green you said is property that would be disturbed, but the dark green is no disturbance at all, right?
That's correct. Existing trees to remain. It is my understanding that there is a gas line easement that runs in between the homes in Scout Creek and this development. Of course, there are no, there's no vegetation existing within that easement. It is a maintained gas line. However, outside of that gas line, the areas indicated in the darker green are areas that would remain undisturbed, and those areas within the lighter shade of green are those that would be replanted after the grading is done on site.
Any other questions for Mr. Martin? Mr. Beasley, did that help?
Yes, sir. It helped with the identification of the buffer. What I'm trying to ascertain from the illustration is where my particular property is, because we've been here two years. We purchased it with the understanding that there wouldn't be anything back there. We wanted to make sure that we enjoyed- Quiet. I'm sorry. We wanted to make sure that we enjoyed quiet in our backyard, and I appreciate the project as being illustrated. On this map, I see there is a buffer of 142. Yes, right up in there. Adjacent to that, where is the cul-de-sac on Scout Creek Drive? If you-
Miss Martin, I think if you go to the next couple pages, there's one with a map in context from, that looks like Google Maps, maybe? There you go.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, so from the cul-de-sac itself, we could go back to that illustration.
I was trying to think of that.
Okay. So yeah, from the cul-de-sac in, you're looking at the portion of the site that abuts the higher-density residential and the non-residential components-
Yes.
-of the village. And in that particular sector, yes, they are showing a largely undisturbed buffer in excess of 140 feet from their property line to the parking area.
Okay. I see where we are in relationship to this map, and I also see, based on the previous illustration, that there is a planned 85-foot buffer right up in there.
That's correct. The residential-on-residential component, the semi-detached residential component to the detached single-family component in Scout Creek, we have 85 feet. And then that portion, like I said, it's got a higher-density residential product and some non-residential functions increases to in excess of 140.
Understood.
And I would note that the buffering for that, the higher-density and non-residential component, is in excess of what our ordinance would normally call for between commercial and single-family detached.
Very good.
Well, that clarifies my question about the extent of the buffer. And I'm sure with the volume of financial outlay and revenue to the city, asking someone to move it back a little further, even though you've provided additional-